All right, everybody, to the start and pledge allegiance, stand if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Uh, Jake, can you call it off? Ryan Landis?
I am here.
Carl Landis?
Here.
Bob Duras?
Here.
Eric Peterson? Ryan Kuehl? Three out of five. I see we do have four. Uh, approval of the minutes has submitted. We have any additional corrections? Or a motion to approve the minutes that's submitted?
I motioned to approve. I second that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Fair being known, Jake. Ryan Landis?
Yes.
Carl Landis?
Yes.
Bob Duras?
Yes.
All right, good. Thank you very much. Uh, President's message. I want to thank Jake and Jackie and the entire staff for all the work they did in making sure that our concert this weekend was an outstanding success. There was a lot more people than I really thought were going to be there. And I, just being me, and having name tags on, had three people come up to me and say, "Hey, this is fantastic. We're tagging pictures. Feel free to steal any pictures that we're doing." And after the third one, I thanked them and I thought it was fantastic. Um, after the third person came up and said that to me, I had to go find Jake and his bride to see what tagging pictures meant. But I guess it's a good thing. So, I, uh, as anyone can tell, within the last few weeks, I've tried doing the face-based thing and it's not working out well. But anyway, thank you very much for that, Jake and Jackie and the whole staff and everybody there. It was fantastic. Um, additionally, Jake, Ryan, and I put on a Capitol campaign presentation to the Park Foundation. And it was a very pointed discussion for a lot longer than I actually thought it was going to be. They asked us a lot of very good questions. Um, by the end of that meeting, Dr. McAfee, who is their fundraising chairman, grabbed Michael Sawyer. And he also grabbed Nate Aldrich, who's on their board. Nate Aldrich, as you know, is also on my Capitol campaign committee. And they're like, "Hey, let's go. Let's get this done." So there's a lot of momentum behind our Capitol campaign with the foundation behind us and approving it. I believe it was Dr. McAfee who reached out to Bob and last Friday, was it?
Yep.
All five of us had a meeting and I think we are on the right track. And it's full force ahead. There's a couple of questions that we got to tweak. But outside of that, we're, uh, we're moving forward. So that's, uh, that's it for me. Um, there's a lot more things that we'll discuss during the meeting here, but those are the big two, big steps forward for this, uh, for this park going forward in the next year or two years, so. Uh, legal advice, attorneys report.
Well, I can be shorter than the President's report. We, uh, we're, it's budget season, so the, you're, the, we're working on pretty much every department that we work with and then conservative districts and those sort of things to get those things ready. Um, so I do not have any specific update with regard to trying to track down the disbursements from, from people who want to buy attorneys for us or anything like that. And so as soon as we are able to do that, we're still looking, we're still looking into those kind of things. I just do not have an update from it because I haven't got ahold of Dave, who is the, who is still the point person on that. Um, if the, the only thing that I've seen is that there does look like there's a couple of progress, a little, some progress on the subdivision. And my understanding from, from discussing it earlier is that we may want to appoint a representative. So if the board wants to take some sort of a mo- motion for a representative to approve the subdivision plat, it looks like, um, or any other documents related to that, as there, we would need that in the next couple of weeks. That'd be the only issue I think that has anything that's coming up, um, that needs to be taken care of today.
Thank you. You want to move on that now or?
Yeah, yeah, let's, let's.
You know what? I want to be going to committees. I'm going to start with Landis. Okay, keep moving forward on that part.
So, so what Jake brought us today was a preliminary flat for the subdividing of that property out by the campground of 700, where the 700 house is. Um, so we are stepping in the next direction. So when, when we're ready for approval, it's going to need a signature. And most likely it will be the President. And if he is not available, then we need to authorize an individual to be, to sign that. Because he may be on vacation or working out of town.
We'll be on vacation. I'll be somewhere.
Just for the public's sake, the 700 house is when you are pulling into our campground. The little white house on the left side of the entry road to the campground is that house that we're subdividing from the campground property. Yep.
And this is- For the legal, from a legal perspective, we've already approved the subdivision, already approved ultimately, like, we're towards selling property. It's, this is mostly formalistically having somebody who's appointed to be the registered agent, to be an agent for the, the board, to be able to approve things to-
Expedite.
Expedite what we've already approved.
Well, I'll motion that we, uh, we appoint, um, Park Board President Brian Landis then as our point person. And should he not be available, Carl, designate Carl to, uh, to be our, our vice-designate should, should we need it, to be able to sign off on this if it should come up between our meetings to expedite moving it forward faster.
And I'll second it.
Motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Fair being known. Ryan Landis?
Yes.
Carl Landis?
Yes.
Bob Duras?
Yes.
Anything else under Landis?
Um, no, I think, uh, no, not at this point. We're not, we haven't heard anything on any of the property in Ocky Key for any of that stuff. So right now, we're bone grass. Grass is growing well.
It came in well, though.
Yeah. It was very good.
It had a hot, dry stretch this summer and I was hoping it'd survive.
I was a little worried there for a while that a lot of it would die, but-
It worked out good.
Good.
Um, I don't think there's much else going on, that, and then, uh, Landis, we're looking at, still getting our toilet installed out of the campground.
Yep.
And that'll be next week, you said? Will we start to work with that?
Yeah, at the, at the amphitheater, uh, site work. I talked to Eminem Maintenance. We got the, we got the county permit. It's a local permit. We got that early this week. Got in touch with the contractor. He's going to do all the site work and, you know, that, so. He's going to be out late next week to do the site work. And then we will throw the sale, the separate, we'll do a little tweak there. Also, it should all finish up this month.
And then also the sign on Boridian and Route 6. Everything's been stamped, approved, so we're waiting on NIPSCO.
Yep. Yep, now we're, now we're just waiting on NIPSCO. Now we've got the, we've got the three tap service.
They're not only electric, so I'm sure.
Make some calls. Come on. Is it a pretty, uh, simple step for this, at this point, is it flipping a switch?
For the most part, what they'll do is do either bore underground from the post across the road and come straight into it, or they'll put a post on our side and run over it down to it. Except for their discretion, whatever it is easiest. At least it's what I'm recommending, which is the simplest of the, as that.
And the power line will come underground?
Yeah, it'll, it'll be underground. It'll be a meter itself. A meter and the apple, very little switch.
Okay.
I've got, uh, I've got access into the, the, in the backbone of the system already to put stuff on the sign. So I'm aware of that. We object, you know, in access as well. So they can just go anywhere, anywhere that we have internet access, we can make the connection.
Cool.
I think that's fantastic. That's really-
Yeah, it's amazing.
But it's been a long time. That sign has been a long time.
Oh, yeah.
Almost as long as the 700 house.
Almost.
It's been in discussions for a decade or better.
Can I motion Carl Space to be the first thing here?
I will second that. People would just die laughing.
All right, um, Landis, maintenance?
Don't think anything fancy. I mean, they took, you know, all the stuff for camps all done and they're putting that stuff away. We got a little more beer garden and then they'll put that away.
Two more beer gardens.
Two more beer gardens?
Two more beer gardens.
Hot dog!
Yeah, September, October.
Woo!
Oh, October. October's going to be hopping.
I know.
It's going to be a good one.
Um, yeah, so I don't think there's anything outstanding with maintenance or anything like that, so it's just all normal.
Yeah, you know, we're sitting in pretty good shape right now. A little more trucks just set up for an end work, but part of the course, so. Yeah, we're sitting in good shape right now.
All right. The rest of the site, what's that, uh, what's that, the small repairs that needs to be made?
Yeah, uh, I haven't, we've not seen parts yet, so we'll check on that tomorrow.
We got some glue?
We got, there's special glue glued on it, yeah.
We got some glue.
It's roped in.
There, there was a crack. So a lot of people look together and look at grace, you know?
Someone, someone misjudged the mower a bit.
It happened.
Approximately to the side.
It was a dud.
It happened, so, yeah. But it's fixed. Well, it just, it came off in a clean crack, so I'll put it back together and straighten that out.
And then they're done, that's all.
Yeah, I can't say I had enough stuff for the mower.
All right. Uh, budget personnel. I know, uh, Ryan and Jake have been talking the last few weeks. And the only thing we really is, we really have to do is make a small transfer to Jake, if you can explain that better.
Yeah, yeah, so we got, uh, that's supposed to do. So it's supposed to be, I'll talk to, I'll talk to Doigo, adjusting the amount. It had $10,000 into hourly in the operating and $10,000 FICA. The FICA, I think we just, we just miscalculated at the beginning of the year. We didn't have enough in it for both the new full-time position that we created and the entirety of the hourly account. The FICA hits both of those. So we just simply, so we'll have to correct that on next year's budget too, because we just spent the same amount this year. So let's correct that early. We'll know exactly what that spend is by January. And then the hourly is just to keep a couple more people on a little bit later into front retreat with the lights, pictures of Santa. Just leave out the staff to handle that. We may have not needed most of that. I think the general humble will include most of that bill. We shouldn't be doing as much as all of it. But that's, that's, that's something that I do need to spend.
So which one of these are we changing? Hourly?
Yeah, so I was, I screwed up and I, I was using the existing one that was updated. And I've got to change events expenses to hourly. So the account line is correct.
You have a budget to run.
Yeah, so that's correct. The account ties this to hourly. So I got to just change that to hourly instead of event expenses. And then, uh, transfer from livestock supplies to other supplies at 1,500. Events to make the money a little bit easier. We can still use an other supplies account to buy stuff for, for the end of the year if we have to. But I can't use like a livestock account to buy a truck park or something like that. It gives us a little more room on that end. Just, uh, just from front retreat and, uh, being up there. But it gives us a little more event coverage, expense, but it's a much broader category of issues that, that one is a little. And then, yeah, that, we should be good the rest of the year, definitely.
Thank you, Bill. White mushroom, all true.
Yeah, and that, and that should be the rest of the money that we can, uh, just keep for the rest of the year, so. General funding in shape, so. I spent it all, but it's in good shape by the time, so.
So we need to make a motion to make these appropriations? So I'd like to make a motion that we make the adjusted appropriations to our budget as listed on our sheet.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussions? Fair being known. Ryan Landis?
Yes.
Carl Landis?
Yes.
Bob Duras?
Yes.
All right, um, animal committee. We got alpacas?
No.
We got the goats. We got the little goats.
Yeah.
And they're active little rascals.
Yeah, they are. They're adorable. They, you know, realize like old and unfun are, are goats are?
Yes.
Until the new energetic goats showed up and are having a party out there. So if anybody ever had a hard time finding the animals, uh, they won't now. You can hear them across the park.
Great, that's great.
And people, they're already big hippos, so they're simply excited to deal with the animals. But they're, they're formidable to be a goat, so they're big, floppy, you know?
Yeah.
And, and that's, that's pretty exciting.
When does our combine place that go in at the park? Just still going to happen by the animals?
Uh, the combine, we haven't moved it to combine yet, but we'll have to talk about taking that out of Capitol next year sometime. Talking to, uh, Ocky Key. We'll get it up and running. Ideally, we go over it next year and put it in the spring. And we have that one, we have it in time for next November.
What about winter lights? Do we have any new ones coming online?
We don't have any new ones coming on this year, but we have a lot of updates to the ones that didn't get updated last year.
Okay.
So we spent, we spent a few grand early in the year for, the tariffs were on and off against the bottom, the bottom head, which we did. And, and so, yeah, we've been updating a lot of winter lights, uh, so far.
Great.
Moving next year. Five more stuff.
All right. Um, we got two more master plan in marketing education. Uh, marketing education's been working hard. I, I asked them a few months ago to come up with a plan to, uh, work with the county's 988 committee through the Health Department. And I'll let Bob and Jake discuss that portion. Anything else that those two committees have?
Yeah, you know, Jake has been the point person talking with Carrie at the Health Department, so Jake, I'll let you go to next plane.
Yeah, so I've been, I've been working with Carrie at the Health Department. She's the care coordinator. And they've got a suicide prevention task force at, at Longwood Program. And so they're trying to get, we're out to more spaces, more places in the community to get a lot of reach. And so we are working with them to get some of their signage at a couple of our parks, Sunset Hill and across Pacific. So I, they're attempting to get signage made. I move right now. Funding's difficult, considering it's, it's a funding issue. But once those are made, a lot of the guys will put four out of Sunset Hill and we have three. And we'll put them in a couple of real high disability areas, then a couple of more to prove it, so it's, uh, a mental pressure. So we've got, we've got that mapped out. The act was just kind of in, in the building, uh, for science and education.
Do, do we think that might take place this year or?
I, I think they're still optimistic that they'll get money this year for it. So if we can get it this year, then we'll put them up in the fall. If they don't give it, photograph, please.
You know, now that we're working closely with Carrie and Health Department on that, I had sent, uh, Brian a few weeks ago a photograph of something that I saw visiting my daughter down in Carmel, just walking along the downtown path. I thought it was really impressive. They had, it was a small tower and it had an AED and a stop the bleed kit. And you simply call 911 and they give you a code to open it up. And I thought especially as highly used as Sunset Hill is, you have all the cross-country teams are there, all the events that we're holding. If we could work to secure some grant funding and/or through the Health Department to install something like that, I, I think it would be a really great fail-safe and only a matter of time before it was likely used to save people's lives there. Yeah, yeah, I think that's something that we should pursue.
Was it in Chesterton that they just, I know there's been one installed here in Porter County somewhere.
They just installed across Tatty Corner here at-
Oh, right here?
At the park.
Okay.
Right between the bathrooms, they installed an AED and it's very likely the same thing. Use scanning QR code or, I don't think that, I think you call 911, they give you a code. So it wouldn't take long to be able to open that.
Right.
But they put it right there on site with as many people and events as they have here.
Looks like a nice pack on it.
Oh, yeah.
It's a fantastic idea.
It's the same reasoning at Sunset Hill, I think especially. Um, yeah, I, I think it would be a really great investment in our park. Say it again?
So, yeah, I'll reach out and help you.
Okay, I'll send you the photograph that I sent Brian and you can have a visual of what that looks like.
Yeah, if, uh, if you, if you're committing, you and Harry and Jake can work on that and see what it's going to take. Get at least one foot in, if there's more.
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't know what the cost would be, but for something like that, you would think that there could be some grant evidence that we could, we could certainly chase down.
Or sponsorship.
Yeah, and I know that councilman, uh, county councilman, Greg Sence, has been very involved in stop the bleed efforts to educate community and provide different kits and whatnot to help do that. So I think that that's an effort he would jump behind, you know, he's, he works as a first responder as well. So I think he would absolutely see the value in that investment.
Absolutely. That's fantastic, Jake. I appreciate that.
Yeah, you bet.
Anything else for marketing and education? Or master plan? You can lump it all in. Are your spokesman the last?
We've, yeah, we've, we've made no headway on the master plan beyond what we've done the last, we met a couple of months ago with Jackie and with Jake. We talked through where we were and how we wanted to move forward with our master plan. Um, and I think at this point, uh, some of the work and the goal is in the staff's core. We've got this next, we've had a zillion irons in the fire. As things slow down, we can circle back and put our thoughts to that maybe over the winter and skip the winter stops. And then in combination with the work we're going to be doing with Capitol, um, projects, you know, raising money. Those hand in hand, I think we can intertwine them together.
And we would also still have to, the property down south on the Cantique. I, I think we still have to reach out to consultants to do feasibility study at that property.
Okay.
It's been costing me a lot.
Do you know how much money that would cost us?
I don't off the top of my head. I know the last time the master plan was written, it was about 20 grand. But this was a full master plan, so it's not that. But a little project, okay, that's right, that's the best I can. So we'd have to reach out to a couple, couple consulting for some of that, you know?
Potentially money very well spent.
Yeah, it, it turns into something we could give this property, yeah.
Does that butt up against Dunn's Bridge at all?
No, there, I think part of the, the grand plan is for roads to be inlet-outlet off of the Cantique. We put a launch at one, or a dust bridge, and we're down. That probably will come out. Otherwise, that'd be a couple million times down for the next.
Right, so in and out will be within our park system?
Yep. From a, we, we could call the other taxes to Cantique.
Really?
On the work out there.
Well, that could be something, how far is it if you were to go in at Dunn's and then get out on potentially that property?
Forget how many miles it was, but it was a good stretch. We'll come, see out there.
Make the float worth it?
Yeah. So I mean, there's a lot of potential in the property. Certainly we can get it to do our way.
There's a lot of history there? You have potential with these sorts of activities?
Yeah, yeah, a lot of store potential. A lot of ecological, uh, significant to the property as well, doing some water shell, uh, things. So there's a lot of value in it. Getting there is going to be, uh, a process. But we, yeah, we have to, we have to discuss how we're going to add that to, to the master plan process and how we want to go about, you know, you know, before you can do one of these existing capo or you want to be next year, try to do next year's operating consultant fund. We're not taking it for, or we'd like a grant that we can, we can upgrade to the rest.
Great. I know we've done a really good job of upgrading our signage at our parks. Obviously, Meridian and Six, but also Brookdale. What does the signage at Hawks Ridge look like?
Uh, there is no sign at Hawks Ridge right now. So that is, if I can reach out to, to Sumcho here, now that we pass the concert, and have them start with Hawks Ridge signage, we just take it to Brookdale.
Can you lay?
Same, same size.
Same branding? Okay, and then the hope would be next spring, if we're in a position to invest some resources in the campground, then we do the same thing there. For, then you have the similar branding, recognizable quarter county park signage everywhere. Great.
Yeah, I was just by the campground the other day. That sign needs-
It's bad, yeah? But we're going to make it right, kind of like that.
We keep putting each other.
Great, that's all I have. Nothing else.
Fantastic. Thanks, everybody. Uh, staff report.
Well, we talked about everything I was given. I guess the only, the only addition is I'm going to start work on a grant, uh, the JW Couch Foundation. I found it early this week. And I'm asking for $50,000 to bring it across. Go, go towards the shelter, kind of the garden behind it, the Hosta Garden, yeah, the bill. I know the work we'll be out there.
Would it fully fund the shelter?
Yeah, yeah, it would fully fund it. The, the shelter always going to cost close to 30-ish. Big some molders, some of them will be out here by the time we get to it now. But, uh, it's about, about 30 to 35,000. That shelter and concrete, that's the building. And then the grant minimum is 50,000. So I can't just submit the, the shelter. Well, we're doing work on Butterfly Garden, Matt and Matt will do a lot of work, oh, well. The Hosta Garden, we've got ground access right now. So anybody, mobility limitations can access the Hosta Garden now, whereas before they couldn't, unless you had the right steps. We just put in, finished putting in a new trail through, through Daffodil Hill, so people can actually walk through the middle of the Daffodils, essentially around it. Along with the planting, I would say 12,000. So there's a lot of work going on, but if we can spread more than that, uh, that I can, I can spend 50 grand for the cost.
And who are we seeking the grant money from?
Uh, so it is the JW Couch Foundation.
Have we, have we sought and/or received money from them before?
No, so we entirely knew the entity, which from what I've read, works in our favor with this particular, they like new, new entries. So that we, uh, they have a grant window that'll close this October. So I'm not going to have patients in by the end of this, 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 26.
Are they Porter County based?
No. I don't remember where the base happened. I looked up Northwest Indian Grants and we came up in search, but they funded stuff all across the nation, so we know where the base is at.
Okay.
But I seen, uh-
We pursue that?
Yeah, that's, that's out. We'll, we'll be on, on the list, talk about the mammals, concert programs, we'll be ready to plant a truck or tree. We jumped right into truck or tree, jumped right into the lights and the picture of Santa, so we jumped right back into spring, so. Who's the ball?
Have we given up on the llama?
I mean, let's just stay it out. For today, January 1, I'm talking to you, so.
Okay.
When I have a livestock question. No, I'm not doing one. Going to get on that.
I'll pack it.
Two. Yeah, that's, that's not a mistake.
All right. Nippon. Friends of Railroad.
Good evening, everybody. Um, Mr. Dorfstein, if you're correctly, you're looking, before I get into our report, I keep agreeing that you're looking to get an AED out of the park, or you don't have one?
We do not have one. Looking to install a tower that has an AED kit, a stop the bleed kit, something like that, similar to something that I saw. That's our ambition.
Um, the reason I ask is I was just recertified this week as a professional adult CPR worker, I've been for two years. So if, I don't know- So if, I don't know how I can volunteer my services, but if I'm out there and an incident happens, I've got my card and I am qualified to administer CPR and operate an AED if in fact somebody doesn't need it.
Good enough, thank you.
Appreciate that.
So, you know, I mean, obviously you wanna call 911, you wanna get the EMS people out there and stuff, but in those seconds that, that you need if somebody falls or has an incident, I am qualified to do that.
Really good enough, yeah, thank you for that.
Sure. Okay, uh, real quick, we had a very successful Thomas Day, we were ringing it out two weeks, we ran it a third week, went really well. Um, the Wednesday day went real well, we've been getting very good attendance this year, a park pretty consistent, you know, donations. The slightly asphalt, once again, thank you sir for, for Coach Peterson, we knocked out that asphalt on Monday, that big pile that we had. Got the ovaries spread out, we do have some more ballast to be brought in, if you have some money, fine, if not, it's not a big pile, we can, Mark, Woller, I can handle it, take it down. Really what we're doing, the concert went really well this, with the crowd that we got, we had over three hundred people, visible layout, about three sixty, we made almost a hundred seventy dollars. You know, between the people coming to the concert and people that were attending the fair, the vendor fair and the craft fair. It went really well, we stayed open, extra hours to just before dark and it was really well received, a lot of people never knew we were back there, do now. Main thing is the Lord, obviously Trunk or Tree, wherever we go, we've got that, day slotted, we're gonna spend the hours there. Santa visit, we're already, you know, got people slotted that if you're willing to have us, we'll do the Santa visit. And then gear it up for the NIPA show, basically it's keeping the grounds clean, gotta get bushes trimmed, they, they got away from us a little bit, but we'll lay it down. Reballasted our outer track because we've got a couple new members, one did join, the other's gonna join. We have a full boat now of people that run live steam. So all three days are run live steam, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, so we're gonna line that up so that people don't get burned out, you know, and your equipment doesn't get all, you know, wasted and stuff. But, yeah, we're gonna have people coming in and shifts, we won't be running the live steam all week, we'll just cut the power of the track. It complements the steam show, people, you know, people who come to the steam show and the members, they love to come back and see us. And of course, if you folks are running the tractors again, that always helps. Uh, last, I've forgotten what is the next day for Meet the Animals, is that this week, Internet?
Thirteen.
It's thirteen, okay, alright. I mean, we always gear up for ten o'clock, but we also know those tractors are coming back, you gotta really be ready. For the folks that come in, those first couple hours get hot and heavy. Other than that, unless anybody has any questions, I have nothing for them.
Thank you very much, appreciate everything you guys do out there.
Thank you.
I'm gonna circle back to NIPA, Beaver Miss, I know they're not in here tonight, but they've been a very good partner for us for many, many years. Twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight is their upcoming show, I believe? Is that the third weekend of?
Yeah.
Yeah, I do have a show upcoming the end of September. And, yeah, I'm gonna say it's twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Yeah, last weekend of the month.
Yep, that's coming up for them. Park Foundation, I'm not gonna speak on their behalf, but I think we had that, that meeting with them, it went very well to see. And it looks like they're, they're wanting to go at it consistently, hot and heavy on there. I believe we're still waiting for a couple of them to come to, to pull off, so we, so we have something to compare to. And if they don't come in with, with that last couple pieces, whatever the date line was on that, then we'll move forward on that one. Cool, next one.
Great, and I talked to Deb about a few questions that I would love to have answered about the example that she brought, so we'll work to get answers on that, yes.
Nice little example, I like it.
And, and before we do adjourn, I just wanted to say too, because I didn't say anything? I wanted to applaud the staff on not just how professionally set up and run the concert was. It's the type of event where if anything goes wrong, it's obvious it wasn't run well in a hurry. And I thought everything was done so professionally, from the parking to people being guided back, to how everything was set up. It was really, really well done and I was having conversations and listening to conversations as we were listening to the concert. And it was really, really well received, so you guys did a great job, the staff did, Matt, everybody, it was, I was really impressed and that's gotta be a big learning curve.
Yes, there was, there were a lot of moving pieces that we didn't count for at the beginning of when we started, but.
And it's, it's, it's the first, it's the first of many, talking about eyes on the trains, we're gonna have so many events back there, so many people will be seeing the trains, getting to know that. But I can't imagine how much you guys learned in that event, you'll, you'll put to good use going forward. It was really well done, I was really impressed, I was proud of you guys, it really, really was.
Um, we were running our, our, yes, right?
Yep, those are, those are.
Did they transport back and forth?
That was, did he get any use at all for this purpose?
The lift never got any use.
Okay, that's alright, but looked good.
Those stairs coming up the side, that was great, it's super easy in and out access.
Very well.
Oh, yeah.
Also, to that event, I was, had met a couple people, one, one guy does some promotions for different types of genre. And he's called me a couple of times since then, he went out to the concert. I said, hold on, let's, after the seventeen, eighteen, towards the end of March, Jake and I will sit down with him and see if it's something that's plausible for what we're doing. But we've got a lot, a lot of great reactions, people are wanting to put out different events there, so they, they were, they were, they loved it.
The sunset and the photographs, sunset behind them was awesome.
This is what it is when everything was working towards.
I'm very sorry, I'm an emotional person and I saw that and I got very choked up. My wife, my wife goes, what's wrong with you? I'm like, this is what we're after, right here, this.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's okay.
You know, we passed the first one, it'll, it'll give more and more know and more positive answers before it's out there, so we'll just, we'll continue to grow at this point now.
Your staff, you better.
Absolutely, and a lot of, both during and afterwards, my phone was blowing up the whole weekend, so fantastic, very child. Any other public comments? They're being done, those in favor of motion to adjourn signify by saying aye.
Aye.
They have, six forty-one, forty-one minutes.